Ready? You ready? We will do the city council meeting for November the sixteenth of two thousand and twenty-two. And we will start by doing the pledge of allegiance. If you can all stand, remove your head if possible. We will do roll call. City council members, Kim Aldison.
Here.
Dan Ratchidall.
Here.
Holly Ryan.
Here.
Mary Bailey.
Yeah.
Mayor Doug Henke. City Administrator Mark Balsing is on vacation. City Engineer Derek.
Here.
Yeah. City Attorney Scott Riggs.
Here.
And we have City Administrator Assistant City Administrator Holly. Hello. We'll get you up here for a working. Working on that for me. Okay. And we have. From the Police Department. Mitch. Glad to see you here. Okay. We can start with season's comments. And we do have somebody special this evening, which is Matt Ryan from Canyon Wyndham go school. Ryan, if you wish to. Take over.
Yeah, special. They had their birthday program last Friday, the high school. And so it's a great event. And afterwards, I was thinking color guard. Numbers for Dean Aaron and Doug S. But you come to a council meeting and we will update on how things are going. Well, so that's why I'm here tonight, seven things to share. Update on. Matt Ryan, seventh principal at K W. This is my twenty-fifth year in the district. Actually started as a third grade teacher. It's been ten years. On the tree and transition to the admin side of things. It's my eighth year in high school, middle school, high school. So. Is that a say a real positive starts with school year. Well, students staff have commented on how most things. Kind of feel back after a couple of years. Uh, the pandemic. Homecoming week back in September, while really fun years participation probably more so this year than the past. Years that was like that back to normal type of deal. One significant thing from the beginning of the school year was we had. Middle school, high school building in Kenyon, quite a few for various reasons. Will shift positions to the district. But with this teacher shortage thing. Even about that's a real thing, especially in certain content areas, but. We were excited about the staff that we were able to bring in this year. Had thirteen. That's what we're looking for far. As far as activities go, ball sports, season wrapped up last or three weeks. Monday night this week, our girls basketball started practice and then boys basketball wrestling started. Practice next Monday, so those. Getting rolling here. Got a ball play that's being rehearsed right now. Performances are coming up first. End of December. Got a middle school concert tomorrow night, high school concert, December thirteenth. Other activities that students are involved in include knowledgeful, middle school and high school math. Robotics. Starting soon. Got a new coding league that's available to our middle school students. That was something to do this year. Just one other note on activities. We made this transition to the Go For Conference from the HBL Conference. Last year, our first year in the HBL. And just. Being another school, similar size to us in the area, most of the conference west of here. We're really proud of the facilities that we have for us. Pay credit for that. It's good support. One of our big undertakings from classroom standpoint this year was the implementation of a new. Social emotional learning curriculum through an advisory program. We're running an advisory schedule on Wednesdays and what we do is short our class period by four minutes. And then that allows us to build it in twenty-eight minutes advisory period in twenty. So morning, Wednesday morning, we had this twenty-eight minute period where students turn into twelve to fifteen. Each teacher is assigned grade level and we're working on social emotional curriculum. To share a couple of comments from that here before I wrap things up. So what's social emotional learning? Process through which all people acquire and apply the knowledge, skills and attitude to develop healthy identity, manage emotions and. Personal and collective goals, feel and show empathy for others, establish and maintain supportive relationships. Make responsible and caring decisions. The components of the curriculum that we're including included adaptability, collaboration, self-awareness. Purpose. The middle school curriculum focuses on belonging and unity and high school curriculum. Guys. By purpose. So that's been, like I said, kind of our big thing this year. Raises with this curriculum. Pretty well received for the most part. I've got a ninth grade group that that I'm even with every.
Can I, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Okay, so do you, are they implementing that in elementary school at all?
This weight finder curriculum in grades five to twelve in elementary has a different type of.
Good, because I was learning, like, reading about this like a while ago, you know, and it's like, well, whatever. I mean, it's probably stemmed from somewhere else and people are probably never the same ideas in the world, but. So like, the Buddhists, they were implementing that like in India, right? You know, they said, well, that's really important and nobody does that. But, you know, by the time someone's like four or five years old. Not that you can't implement that later, but it's better to do it earlier. Right? I mean, the brain absorbs it more, don't you think?
Something that's happened eight, eight, twelve, we're.
Good.
Yeah.
Cool. Good. Wonderful. Yeah, yeah. Little more difficult, right? But yeah, okay, so that's cool.
Yeah, but no, things are off to a good start. Like I say, we're. Both the girls can get a little messy at times, but. Yeah, thanks for the advice. Here tonight. Any other questions or? Thank you.
Thank you, Principal Ryan. Anybody else wish to have some comments? Okay, if not. We will go on to adopt the agenda. And Holly, I think you're pretty well taken care of. Is there anything to add or subtract out of it? Okay, then we need a motion on that.
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda for eleven sixteen twenty-two.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion has been made. Second to adopt the agenda as is. All of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, opposed, ayes, pass. Okay, next one we can do is a consent agenda. Approval of the minutes and appointments. And financial, we can do that all on. One motion.
I'll move approval of that.
We will second that then. Any more discussion on it? If not, motion has been made, second. To adopt the consent agenda. Approval of minutes and appointments and financial. All of those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Opposed, ayes, pass. Hey, wait, not very long. Presentations, public hearings, recognition, proclamations, are there any that you know about? Okay, we can pass on that then. We'll go into engineering. And Derek, if you wish to take over with that, certainly appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor. So in your packet, I'm trying to load it up here. First, there's a letter kind of summarizing what we found out about this request from a couple of months back regarding. Angle parking in the downtown area. So we brought this to the last E D A meeting specifically that was. That was, that request was to look into bringing angled parking into the downtown area, whatever areas would make sense. We met with. Min Dot, I believe it was back in August to discuss some of those details. They provided us with the list of their concerns or. A little bit of information on how the process would work if. If we were to pursue that. And then after that. At full nament here, we just put together a list of some of the information that. Min Dot provided us along with a more detailed look at downtown area. The second page of this report. Or this letter here just kind of shows what this revised layout would look like if the city were to pursue. This type of parking. Realistically, the, the actual physical work that it would take to revise the layout through there really isn't all that much. It's just restriping. But it takes a lot of planning. And that downtown layout as far as traffic flows through there and how they park would change quite a bit. So I won't go through the full list of, of the bullet points that I had in the letter there. But just to summarize what the E D A had thought about it. More of a, let's look into different options. Look at. Specifically, looking at parking options in the alleys around downtown instead, it seemed like, oh, first. A good first approach to parking in the downtown area and then just kind of go from there. Any questions or discussion on that?
No, that makes sense to look at, at the other options because this looks really confusing. And I just don't think it's. I don't think it's a good first option or.
Were you at the E D A meeting?
That was not.
Okay. Because we talked about your, right? Were you there with us? Okay, I know, I forget because they all blend together. But we were kind of talking about like, maybe, you know, it's just an option, right? Like the alleys. Because we all have a lot of room back there. You know, like, maybe if we could do something with the sempra. Where we say, okay, well, maybe, you know, instead of just doing the front of the buildings, you could say, well, maybe make the back of your building. Be, you know, not so ugly. And then maybe we put signs up, you know, for people and like I could maybe fit two parking, you know. I can't do a lot, but maybe each business could do one or two.
Yep.
Because in other towns they do that and that would be kind of nice. You know, to have the. Parking, it's just one of.
Lacy's does that.
Well, Lacy's does that and like, you know, the V F W does that and the Muni does that, but if. You know, if we could make that kind of more consistent and not that that's number, but it was just something we talked about.
Well, if.
That might be nice.
If a couple of businesses could do that at two spots per business, if you could get five that could do that. You're one spot ahead of this, this plan here.
Yeah. Yeah.
You know, so, and that seems like it'd make a lot more sense to, you know, and, and then trying to. I just, I just have visions of Pine Island and it, that is always confusing driving through there. It is just really difficult. And I've been through there a lot. So I like, I like your idea better.
Yeah, that was not my idea, but it was, well, Chris Mallory, because she's knows all that stuff, but.
There was quite a lot of discussion on that. Actually, it took up a good share of the E D A meeting.
Yeah.
Another one that's a possibility is. Where the barber shop is and the laundromat. There is room back there. There needs to be some improvements made. Into that area. You know, it's something that can be looked at first before we go ahead and spend a ton of money.
Yeah. Yeah, there's ways to get through, like, if you go to even like Northfield and stuff, I know I parked in like they have that back kind of parking lot and then you can kind of walk through these little alleys to get out to the front. You know, I mean, there's just other things. We've got some space back there. You know?
Okay. Very.
Okay, so no other discussion on that. That was more of a update, no specific action requested. Next thing I had was just a. General project update on a couple of the projects that are currently going on. So. The Pearl Creek sanitary sewer improvements. I have our. Survey crew that's been on site and they have a little bit of work here to do yet. So just went marking on that over the last month as schedule allows. Also have our geotechnical engineer out there doing soil borings here in the next couple of weeks. Hopefully, so once we get that information locked down, then we can start up with the actual design. Twenty twenty-three street improvements, really not doing anything with that one. I'll be coming back with more information on that like the next month. And lastly, North Street Drainage Improvements. Been a couple of months since we had the first pay application go through for that project. We were waiting for some grass to come up so that they can hold their erosion control for this project. They have done that now. So we're requesting for approval tonight. Here's just approval of pay application number two, which is the final pay app. For this project. So that's one thousand fifty-two thirty-five cents to the cook drainage.
I'm assuming you need a motion on that.
Correct.
I'll make a motion to approve the amount of one thousand fifty-two thirty-five for the final payment for the North Street Drainage Project. I will second it.
Hey, is there any more discussion on it? I'll tell you that a motion has been made in second for approval of pay application number two for a de-cook drainage. With thousand fifty-two dollars and thirty-five cents. Those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes, opposed, ayes, pass.
That's all I have.
You got it all then? Okay. Then we can go on with legal, which would be Attorney Scott Riggs.
Thank you, Mayor. Update on one link for the afternoon. I've had a few conversations with Mark before he left town. I know some things have been moved. There was a call scheduled together with the owner's attorney. Seems like we're at a standoff on a couple of issues relative to, well, I don't want to clean up that because I don't think I have to. Kind of comments. I reached out again today to the city's prosecutor. We're going to move and look at it a little differently at this point, as I suggested last week. Also, I know Sam in my office sent an email to the chief. I don't know if he got it, but I just wanted to see if, yeah, yeah, I, I think he did, but yeah, I, I. That's what I thought. I, I figured you were gone. I, I wanted somebody to check it in the daylight. So if you can do that tomorrow, I'd have you do that for me because when I speak with David Jacobson, I want to make sure exactly what we've got, what we've seen. We do know they've moved some stuff because Mark has verified that for me. It's just happening too slow. So it was noted, we may take a different approach and that's why I'm going to speak with David again. You know, it's, it's, it should have happened. We've given them plenty of time and you, you all know that from last meeting, meeting before, there was a meeting before that. So other than that, I don't want to get too detailed into what we're actually going to do, but. That's, if you have questions, certainly let me know, let Holly know. I'll explain it to you individually. But beyond that, I don't want to put that out there right now. We'll figure it out between the two, both the civil and the criminal side of the attorney.
Some of the trucks moved to Wyndham go.
Yeah. Yeah, I know.
Over there.
Yeah. No, there's still parking on, you know, unpaved surfaces. There's only violations related to that, nuisance violations related to that. There are still a lot of storage items out there that. You know, while they may be being used for certain purposes or being repurposed, they're still not to be stored in that capacity. There's other cleanup items. And it doesn't seem like there's an understanding that that has to be dealt with to come into compliance with the city code. So I think we may, like I said, we'll, we'll maybe take a different approach and plus something changes this week. Questions? Thank you.
An ongoing thing.
Yeah, it, it is. It's unfortunate and again, I don't think we're really to the point where somebody can use an excuse and say the snow is flying because we already gave them. A number of months to move it. So I don't think that's relevant for what needs to be done to the property. So I, I, it didn't come up today, but. It, it may, but it's not really relevant at this point. Okay. 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 Well, yeah, I, I don't know how, that I, I don't know what else to say other than need to comply. Why, why don't we talk tomorrow? Because I, I want to make sure I. I don't want to misquote or, or do anything inappropriate with his attorney. I think his attorney is trying to get things done and maybe. The property owner as well. It's just based on what Mark relayed to me previously, there wasn't much done at that point in time. There were some things done. As the mayor notes, some of these vehicles were moved, but yeah, let's, let's follow tomorrow, all three of us maybe and decide what to do. And then I'll talk to David after that. Okay. Okay. Okay, well, and, and maybe that's the case. Maybe, maybe he's taking it to heart and I hope that's the case, but if not, we'll do the steps I told you before. Let's go that route. And unless you want me to do something different, I would recommend continuing down that path.
No, I think you're doing good following the course. Seems to be moving a little bit at a time and keep the pressure on. I believe it will. Get itself straightened out.
Good.
So we can look at it into next year.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, well, thank you.
I thought we'd have it done for Dan, but we're not going to have it done. I'm not surprised.
Okay. Is there anything else that you have for legal? Okay. We can move on then to old business and from what I gather, there's nothing to be brought up. Holly, is that correct? Okay. So we're moving right along on this year. We're going to new business. There's a number of items on this year and since Mark is not here on vacation. Attorney Riggs will update us as to where we go along on this year.
I, I will do that gladly, along with Holly's help, obviously, so.
I got you off the hook.
Yeah. Well, the first item in new business is canvassing the twenty twenty-two election results. It's something you do. It's standard for city councils to do so. You have in your. Packet, the summary report of all the election results and you need to make a motion to accept those. I know they've been submitted, but you do have to officially accept those. So a motion is in order for that.
I will move that we accept the canvassed election results for the November eighth, twenty twenty-two election for Kenyon.
I'll second.
Okay, motion has been made, second for the canvas for twenty twenty-two election returns and declared the results. All of those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes, pass.
And congratulations, everybody.
Okay, next item, eleven is the twenty twenty-three proposed agreement for the city county joint powers. It's our agreement for building services. So the state building code enforcement, we have a contract with the county have for many, many, many years. It's generally the same contract with dates and items like that changed. So it's recommended again, a motion to approve that contract.
I make a motion to approve the twenty twenty-three proposed agreement for continuation of our city county.
I'll second it.
Okay. That one has been same one for years now, so.
Yes.
Not a problem with it. Okay, motion has been made, second. For twenty twenty-three proposed an agreement for continuation of our city county joint powers agreement for state. Building code administration. All of those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes, pass.
Next item we have is item C, which is resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty-one. Entitled improving the certification of tax increment financing district number four dash four, parentheses forty-five of the city of Kenyon. What this is, is the tax increment district related to the Sunset Homes. It has been paid off and paid in full all the obligations under the existing note and contract. Once that happens under state law, we are required to certify the district. I know there have been some discussions with the city's auditor on that as well. What you have in front of you is the resolution that gets submitted to the county to certify the district. So all the tax, the new taxes coming in will be distributed appropriately to the city county. And school district rather than being captured for the tax increment district. So it goes back to what it normally would be without a district in place for tax increment. So it's again recommended and really it's our statutory obligation to adopt resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty-one.
So does this have anything to do with the Sunset Home closing or is that just purely coincidence?
Purely coincidental.
That was because I got, I got that question.
It's a great question.
Yeah.
Question. Even it, well, if there were still obligations out there, it may have an impact, but the, the obligations for the city to collect that increment and pay it. Have ceased at this point in time. So no, there is, it's purely coincidental.
This resolution was going to come up.
No, it would have come up later in the year like it is right now.
Yep, yep. It's, sometimes when two events happen.
I know.
Close together, they get mixed together and I.
I thought that might be a question that people would wonder, but no, the city has paid all the debt obligation that was necessary. That's occurred. It needs to be adopted so we can go back to what the tax status would be.
Sure.
Thank you, Don, again, for asking that question because I had the same. Thought in my mind, so.
And again, like I said, if there was still an obligation out there that was closing, that would be a different issue and we'd still have to deal with that, but that's not what, that's not occurring here. It's, it's all done at this point in time.
Yeah. Ryan made the motion on resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty-one.
I'll second that.
Any more discussion? Not, there has been a motion made for resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty-one. All of those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes, pass.
Thank you. Our next item D is resolution twenty dash twenty, excuse me, twenty twenty-two dash twenty-two. Adopting assessment for delinquent utility bills, something you annually do in November, if not into December, usually we do it by November. Any bills that have not been properly paid, the city will certify to the tax rolls. In this case, we have provided appropriate notice under our city's ordinance and state law, state statutes. And before you, you have the resolution that shows that notice was provided. It also cites the delinquent accounts on exhibit A with the parcel numbers specifically. This gets filed with the county. And those assessable amounts there will be placed on the tax roll for payment over the next year. I do not know what those four assessments are for. I apologize. I don't, I don't think we have that in there. They are utilities. Okay, then that's fine. So they're utility bills. It's a simple adopt the resolution and staff will take care of it to make sure the city and utility gets paid.
I'll move approval of resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty-two.
I'll second it.
Okay, any more discussion on it? If not, we will. Motion has been made, second on resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty-two. All of those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes, pass.
The last item E under new business is resolution two thousand twenty-two dash twenty-three designated an annual polling place. This is a statutory obligation of the city as well that the legislature has said annually, we have to designate a polling place. Even though there may not be an election next year, we're still supposed to do it. You have a resolution, the packet twenty dash twenty, twenty twenty-two dash twenty-three. That does that. Again, just simply adopt the resolution and staff will take care of it.
Okay, I'll make the motion to adopt twenty twenty-two dash twenty-three.
I'll second that. I'll second that.
Okay, any more questions, Donna?
I will say it is really nice setup. Yeah, there's, there's space and when I went, I went right away in the morning. I think you were already voting mayor. But a couple of people at, uh, the, the table where, you know, you get special, the special machines. And the layout was just so comfortable. It, uh, it's, it's a nice setup.
The only thing I can see wrong, but it's too late. We need some wider parking spots out for the vehicles. It's extremely tight.
I was wondering that same thing with the people that are in there working. They could park like on one of the other sides.
Yeah.
Free up more.
Yeah.
Spots right out front, but.
It is, but when it comes to meetings and that, yes, it is extremely tight.
Yeah.
So.
Just, just for reference, when it is restriped, we're just talking about the front parking lot, right?
Right.
Right in front of the parking lot.
Yeah, when you got a crew coming to town.
Well, it's, the pavement has to be rehabbed in the next couple of years and we have to restripe it, so it's anything to fix.
Perfect.
Good comment.
Pass it down then. Okay, what's, I don't know, should we should be on that?
Yeah, yeah, yep.
Okay, I'm sorry about it. Okay, motion has been made in second for the resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty-three. All of those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Opposed, ayes, pass. Okay, we're moving right along. Is there, I don't know of anything else. Is there that, down there? Everything is down here, okay? Other business, schedule of upcoming meetings. City council meeting will be Tuesday, December the thirteenth at seven P M. Township fire contract meeting will be Tuesday, December the sixth. That's an easy one to go with. And then item two of the same day will be the twenty twenty-three budget and levy public meeting. And that will be Tuesday, December the sixth at six thirty. And we can move on from there. Council and staff and general comments. And, um, we'll start over there with you, Derek, this time.
I would just wish everybody a nice holiday next week.
Thank you.
I would as well and just congratulations to Lee's here and also him, the both of you. Very excited to see that, so. Stay in.
I'm just happy. Okay, how about you, man?
No, I said it before, congratulations, you guys. It's great.
Congratulations, Mayor, Councillor Helgeson, future Councillor Scholander. Congratulations all.
Yep.
Christmas in Kenyon, December third. Santa Claus is coming to town. Have the tree lighting ceremony. There's talk of the parade after that. We're still trying to get people to. Get their units and walking or tractors, trailers, whatever for the light up parade. So spread the word on that and.
Oh, you're doing a light up parade? Oh, good.
The tree lighting ceremony, so.
Oh, good. Yeah, cool.
Chili feed, we're in the works, trying to get that resolved. We're meeting again tomorrow night, so if anybody wants to join us and help out, you're welcome to. So, so I'll have to go back if I have one more comment.
Well, I just want to, I want to point out the park board too. Uh, you guys have done a fabulous job. Uh, trunk or treat was, I've heard such positive comments and our park board is doing really, really good stuff right now. And I just want to make sure that that's pointed because it's a good group, super collaborative group, working together and they get really cool stuff going for Kenyon. So, good for you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I gotta take my comment back too. Yes, I definitely say that park board and rec. Yeah, I mean, it's really showing up in the last six months since, uh, middle of, uh, the summer. And that, and it's showing that there is a lot of enthusiasm in it and, uh, people are beginning to show up. Which is a great thing.
Community's really, really liking it, so we're looking forward to being able to do more.
Okay.
Cool.
Anybody else got any comments they'd like to say?
Oh, you mean after six, before you turn on sixty? People are clipping.
Oh, wait a minute. I slid through that and I, I slowed down way up by the county shop. It was so slippery. I'm lucky there was nobody coming. One went from the other way and the next car was way up on the hill and I'm, but then I was in the middle of the intersection. Keep going now. Yeah, yeah, yeah. But I did slow way down. You still slid through that. That Monday was different.
But I, I turned, I mean, I turn on that road all the time. I pitch six and they're fine. They're coming down the hill. I give them a kid's weight. Because they don't go down until they hit the bridge.
Well, we can call for a German then, a German, and this is almost setting a record. I think the last one was thirty-five minutes. That was about a year ago or more.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'm getting a second now, one. Any discussion? This is a motion been made, second to adjourn, uh, council meeting. Of, uh, November the sixteenth, the twenty twenty-two. All of those in favor of it, say aye.
Aye.
Nobody's opposed, pass.